Everybody ready to go to work?
Yeah.
Now, no more, it's time for any more. Now, session, make four things now session with Raju, please. Please.
Which is the flag of the United States of America, considering what with which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item is Karenowski, major subdivision, uh, ED twenty-four dash forty-six. And you step forward, sign it, state your name and address to the record books.
What's your name, sir?
Paul Gdanskij, G D A N S K I. You need it or?
They will.
Okay.
Yes, sir, Mr. Brenner.
Okay, um, this project has been around for close to two years. Um, actually, we've had two appearances before the town board to get the proper boundaries for the zone changes. The town board has approved two lots, or the town board has zoned two lots for the rear of the property and the front of the property is the old Bonadorno situation where they were running their operation. What we're trying to do now is to build those two lots and ultimately, the third lot will be for a building, which will house some of the equipment that's out on this, the field right now. Uh, we did have a little problem in terms of, um, getting the engineers to approve so that we can proceed with the project. We gave them certain, the client gave them certain assurances, uh, because we have the opinion right now, it's the wrong time to do a percolation test. The percolation test will be done ultimately before we get to final. Uh, the engineers finally agreed to that, and you'll see from the last letter you got from Booker, they've now said we can go ahead.
Thank you. Let me go through the consultants' reports. Project review has no additional comments. Um, number two, uh, this is from Rick Oliver dated May first twenty-five. He has two comments. One is as per Jane Slade's previous comments dated eleven eight twenty-four, please identify the trees and space layout when he decided to lot. Have the respect to her this letter dated November eighth, two thousand twenty-four. She has five comments. I have a letter from, oh, God. Karenowski, I'm not getting, try the first name, uh, I apologize, dated May thirteenth. Let me read the letter. Gentlemen, we are the owners of the property located at two eighty-three North Mittletown Road in the Hamlet of Pearlwood. We are going to do several zone changes on our property with the town board in order to develop two residential lots boarding on Charles Street. We have retained engineers and surveyors to develop the lots. We've developed the lots with full approval from all regulatory agencies, town board, town planning board, town zoning board, building department, approved designs. We will go about homes in accordance with approvals. We are well aware of the temporary percolator tests are required and we will provide them. However, to move the project, the planning board needs your company's reviews with stipulations to proceed. Accordingly, a letter from our office indicating that certain conditions must be met before final approval is granted is necessary. Based on conversations that you had with our attorney, Donald Brenner, we will hold you and the town whole harmless if the percolating tests do not agree with our engineers' designs. We will redesign the system to meet with new requirements if necessary. Your cooperation is greatly appreciated. Son truly yours. I have a letter from the Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, County Orange County, May twelfth, Bruce Peters. And he has twenty-eight comments. I have a letter from the Bureau of Fire Prevention, April twenty-first. They have one comment. I have a letter from Booker Engineering, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Basically, um, respect to the drainage, you just recommend, please see attached home harness letter from the owner of the subject property dated May thirteenth, two twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, I'm sorry. Based off our review and the attached letter, it is our opinion that increased in the stormwater runoff can be significantly mitigated for this project. We therefore recommend that the Karenowski subdivision be approved for drainage sub to the public. General comments. Okay. I have another letter from Booker Engineering, May first. I just want to read his prior, uh, letters in. And drainage review comments. Significant information has not yet been provided to demonstrate the potential significant adverse impacts which reflect the drainage can be mitigated. We therefore recommend that the Karenowski subdivision not be approved for drainage at this time. So at that time, they had site plans of which they were the one, the two, or five, um, the secret detail, details and drainage reports. Okay? I have another letter from Booker Engineering, the same one?
Yeah.
They want, said what they want.
Okay.
They want six.
Okay.
The same letter.
Yeah, same letter.
I have a letter dated April twenty-first from Joseph Nyatray. We've seen the project editor here for Booker. Our comment letter from the last time still stands since it has not been addressed. That was dated April twenty-first. I have a letter from Booker Engineering, November twelfth. January twelve, twenty twenty-four, thank you. Uh, significant information has not yet provided to demonstrate the potential significant adverse impact with respect to drainage can be mitigated. We therefore recommend that the Karenowski subdivision not be approved for drainage at that time. I have a letter from Department of Planning, Rockland County Department of Planning, May seven, two thousand twenty-five. They have thirteen comments. I have a letter from Rockland County, help, dated May twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. They have four comments. A letter from Alfred Gabby, Orange and Rockland, dated May tenth. Based on the drawings provided, there should not be any conflict in the distance as searched. Please note, all gas facilities must be located prior to work and all codes seven fifty-three will follow. I have a short EAF dated twelve eighteen, two thousand twenty-three. Hate anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a letter from Karenowski, uh, Karenowski, who dated twelve twenty-four, twenty-four, she spots the comments. Are they in here? We have a letter from Paul Gdanskij, uh, status, status, every sewer analysis, one nineteen, twenty-five, and again from Paul Gdanskij, hydraulic analysis dated twelve, two twenty-three. Any question, comments?
Yeah, I got a question. I got, there's two sets of plans here. One was received April twenty-eighth, the other one was received May fourteenth. One's, uh, twenty-three. What's the difference between the two?
I was addressing some of the drainage comments from Booker.
So the one that was submitted today, we didn't see.
That the only, yeah, the only difference was I added, changed some notes to address the last comment letter that he had where he approved the drainage. So that some of those comments are addressed on the plans.
The, um, project review meeting, which one set had, was three weeks ago. And in the three-week period, I told Mr. Gdanskij about it, and I said, what changes did Booker want? And he had spoken to Booker, he had met with Booker, and he had made those drainage changes, primarily the project's the same.
Yeah.
When were those changes made?
We delivered, we delivered drawings to everybody. I don't know if you didn't get copy on it, but we delivered drawings to the town, to the Bruce Peters, to Booker. That was delivered the Friday after the project review meeting. Which is about two and a half weeks ago.
The, the new prints you delivered.
About two and a half weeks ago, that's correct.
Then. Little confused here because.
Looks like Booker's comments, the plans that I got was this one. The plans that were on the table this morning, I just put today, this evening, was this one.
It's the same layout, nothing's changed. The only thing is I addressed some of his drainage comments. That was it.
And the drawings you got were delivered, uh, you got them tonight, but the drawings you got were delivered about two and a half weeks ago.
So it's only a, a couple of notes on the plans that were changed.
Yeah, and I added a drainage area map and that's, and some little, some details that he wanted fixed.
I don't have anything. Is there anything?
Just going back to Dave's comment, uh, number two, uh.
Yeah, I did put that. That's these arborvitae, it says proposed six-foot-high arborvitae. Yeah, on page two. Those are the trees she's talking about. I'll put it, I'll add the spacing. Yeah, on lot one. Yes. Yeah.
Your tree list doesn't list the arborvitae?
No, because it's one tree, I'll, I'll add, it's, it's only one tree. If you want, I can add a tree list.
But there's only one arborvitae?
No, I mean, there's one species. Yeah, yeah.
So is that taking the place of any other ones that are on the list?
No, there is no, there is no tree list.
Excuse me, there's a tree list.
Where's that? Oh, I'm sorry, that's the existing trees. Those are the existing trees.
So you're only going to put in the arborvitae?
Correct.
The green giants?
Yes.
And it says that you're proposed twenty, uh, five or six, five arborvitae?
Yeah.
So it's going to be green arborvitae, you're going to go up by the, the, the fir, they don't prefer the, the green giants.
Yeah, no, no problem. Yeah, just to screen the, the, yeah, the lot one, yeah.
Mike, any questions? At the, uh, November thirteenth, the twenty twenty-four, uh, planning board meeting, we ask several things. We ask for a landscape plan to be developed along the north and south block lines whereby screening for neighbors regarding privacy and blocking headlights, which means two driveways where they have to turn around facing the north, which is the condominiums there, they would have to have some sort of screening.
Yeah, no problem.
Uh, both those are in areas. Uh, we also, uh, and also along the, uh, the chain link fence probably between the two driveways because you have, uh, the T coming in, which will shine lights right into the doorways and apartments there. That's one. Uh, on, on page two of the plans, you list now the trees. We ask which ones are being removed and which ones will remain. That was asked at the last meetings of November twenty, uh, November thirteenth and twenty-four.
No problem, I can add that.
Also, this is what was asked for the last meeting, it's more of the, can you show me where the height is located as for the five, all the comments?
Yeah, it's on the. Here's the height right here at the corner of Charles and, let's see what the tree that is. It's on the key map. There's one, there's one right there. Corner, if you go down Charles.
Yeah, okay, what's the distance?
The distance is probably.
Now, by the, that's the way it has to be, it can't be like the bird flies, it has to be roadway where they can drop the hose.
Yeah, it's that, it's the, I can, I can add that on.
No, you need to know the distance, otherwise it doesn't probably be, uh.
It looks like it's about four hundred feet.
It sounds like it has to be.
Well, we, we will guarantee to the.
But I don't guarantee it's asked.
Well.
I'm just saying it was asked the last meeting, Mr. Brenner, and it's never answered.
Though, those, those questions are asked, which the board is rightfully doing, but, um, until we do a, a final survey as to the layout, all those, and, all those questions will be answered.
No, no, five, height is here. You don't have to six hundred feet.
We have to put a new fire height on that.
So that's got to be shown in the plans.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which we're agreeing to do.
Which we've stuck here. There's four, but I just want to put a tack in, comments. And Booker's letter of, uh. Okay, Booker's letter dated May fourteen, twenty twenty-five. Page two, drainage review recommendations. Please see attached home harness letter from the owner of the subject property dated May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Based off of our review and the attached letter, it is our opinion that the increase in stormwater can be significantly mitigated for this project. Now, I go to Mr. Peters thing, and, uh, he has numerous revisions or problems, dimensions of Charles Street, the peak turnaround locations of driveways, looking to the Perkins soil test samples, which hasn't been done yet. This is springtime, we're going into spring. Okay, further, uh, if you look at, uh, Rockland County planning comment on page two is the first paragraph of the presentation before the number. GMO Rockland County planning has certain phases to review. I respond to the project. Booker's letter is dated five fourteen, received five fourteen. That's zero days for Rockland County planning to comment on it. And in addition, B D M E has not had the opportunity to respond to B D M's letter either, because he handed his responses in May twelve, did, and received May thirteenth, which is before that. So that's just my comments for right now. Let's see if I have any other most relevant topics or whatever. Thank you, right now.
So I, my first question is, are we reviewing the subdivision or the site plan?
Site plan.
Site plan.
Okay, is it, all right.
The subdivision was something by the town board.
It was that, right. So we're reviewing the site.
No, 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 no. Town board gave the zoning for what we can do, okay? You are really, re, looking at the subdivision.
So it's just a subdivision, not a site plan?
That's correct.
So there's a lot of information.
That's correct.
But we're not actually.
No, strictly subdivision, right.
Okay. So, so this stuff like the, for, but I don't have the letter where they said it was approved. I have all the letters I have here, say, like, the documents are already, yeah, so I think the first question is.
What, what they wanted, they wanted some additional percolation information to support what was going to be done. Percolation usually takes place after you get preliminary and after you go to zoning. Please, you, it usually gets done after we do, uh, location of where the subdivision is going to be. So therefore, we said it was not the right time to do percolation. A percolation is done either s, in the fall or spring, but it's done after we've established the subdivision. So what we're trying to do is establish the subdivision, allow it to go forward and get the variances if needed, and then at that time, we'll do the percolation, which Mr. Peters is going to require and the consultant is going to require. We will do it at the proper time.
Okay, so like the drainage will, it doesn't matter what's been submitted right now for drainage, because until you get the perk done, then it might all change.
It's possible.
It's possible.
We don't believe it will, but it is possible, it can change. And if it can change, we'll have to redo it.
Okay, just 'cause I, you know, the right, right adjacent to this is that retention time for, I don't know if it's the town or supervisor and what?
That's, that's the town, and that was done to protect Cherry Brook.
Right, and then, like, I, I'm familiar with the area, and I know there are a lot of water issues there, like, I know there's, people's houses have stopped running nonstop. There seems to be underwater, something going on in that area.
Yeah.
I know you were proposing dry wells, but, you know, just want to make sure you're not, not cause the houses were proposing to put there. Be very cautious, have to do basements for sure. And then, you know, making sure you're not impacting all these other neighbors that are already suffering with water.
Yeah.
So, so, but just for the subdivision and, and then what are the comments?
Well, strictly subdivision.
Thank you.
You know, I haven't, I haven't. Did you have anything? I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
We're ready now, I just want, I just want. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, could I have a motion open up to the public?
Motion open, public motion.
Second. Okay, all favor, aye. Okay, anybody from the public who should speak on the project? For time, anybody from the public who should speak on the project? Karen, now, motion to close.
Motion to close, public motion.
Second.
Second.
All favor, aye, any votes? Board have any additional, additional, uh, questions, comments? Eddie, Eddie, additional? Lisa?
No.
Okay, see, go for variances, what variances you want?
Don't know, we're going to find out. I, I mean, if we don't have to go, we, we won't, then we'll, the next step will be to, uh, clean up your comments, clean up the engineers' comments, and do, I don't know what.
Comments, you said all this is, is for site plan and for.
Subdivision.
Subdivision.
That's correct.
And don't talk, but you're talking about the site plan.
No, okay, let me, we are before the board for a three-lot subdivision. That's what we're here for today, okay? That's what we're here for today. To go forward and then follow all these comments that is made, we have to get to a point where we finalize what comments have to be made. If we get no information from the building department asking for zoning requirements, we're not. But we have things here that we have to go forward and do. If not, then we're going to go forward and finish the job and then come back and do the lots, which we have to do, which is what you require. Each lot is going to have to have its own layout. But we still have to get certain things done with Mr. Peters. Then Mr. Peters comes into involvement, you have to work with Mr. Peters.
Well, Mr. Peters is talking about this stuff.
He's right, he's got twenty-three items, which we have to take care of.
But that's site plan.
Well, yes and.
Site plan, we're doing so, no, but it's what they're talking about, site plan. Subdivision, site plan, it's a different thing. Site, site plan with the subdivision, we want it to do the three.
I thought this application is for subdivision.
It says subdivision, doesn't it? It doesn't say what it should have said, three lots subdivision. It's for subdivision, that's it. Yeah, but they're talking about how we, going forward with the stuff at site plan.
Well.
Talking about that they need someone, they have to have a zoning board for the plan.
I, 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 I have not, I have not seen that.
Right, and then they have to come back for the site approval before they go over zoning.
I think, I think you're ahead of yourself a little bit.
Okay.
Okay. That's, I think, right now, we, 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 board should address three lots subdivision. And then, if, if it's approved, then you go back, would, you see our comments and respect the site plan, and you're going to have to satisfy them before you come back.
Well, we have, he has to pick a house, we have to know what the heights are, right.
And there's a whole, there's a whole gambit of things you have to do before you come back.
I, I have no objection. I don't think the client has a problem, we, we have, we're not.
The zoning board.
I don't know if they pick, if they pick a house that needs a variance, I don't know.
Well, if they pick a house with variance, you're going off the site, this is your site plan then.
This, the subdivision has established three parcels of certain size. Okay. Now, Mr. Peters is saying, for this subdivision, he has certain requirements to make sure that he feels that it's going to work with town standards. We were putting in a T, if you noticed, even though it's a site plan, a T is required.
But it's not set properly.
Well, that's the, that's what we have to work out with him.
You're talking about getting approval for the site, for the, uh, subdivision.
Correct.
But then you're going to look at size of house, like, you, the zoning, I'm going to go to zoning for that, then I'll come back here with the plan.
Well, I, I stand corrected, maybe I don't need to, you know, maybe we ought to do both. Maybe we ought to do site plan tonight, too. Maybe we should do site plan, because we've laid out a lot, we've stayed within the marking of where the house should go, and maybe we should ask, ask for a site plan.
It's not advertised, so, so right now, the only thing that we can talk about right now is the subdivision.
Well, it was actually advertised for a site plan.
According to what?
That's what it says on my pink thing.
Polar, 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 final site plan. But, but the title is subdivision. Oh, and that's what it's called, subdivision, okay, I don't.
We, we, we've had, we've had some changes in the office, a lot of things have been. I, I, I can't comment on that, I really can't. I'm just saying what's here on your sheet. And, and we have no problem talking about site plan, we'll talk about site plan, too.
Now, let, let's just talk about subdivision.
Okay.
As almost before this board.
Okay.
So that's why I'm, so right now, you do not have subdivision. Am I correct?
That's correct, right now.
You have a single lot right now?
No, no, right now, I have, I think we have two lots, we're making it into three lots.
Okay, all right, okay, so you have, it's, you have two lots, you're going to merge them into three lots.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's what we would be going on.
So what are the two lots? Excuse me? What are the two lots?
The two lots was one residential at the northern end and, at the western end, and the commercial on the eastern end. With the town board granting the zone change, we now have two residential on the western end and one on the eastern end.
Right, the one that comes out of the western end is the one off Charles.
Correct.
That's correct.
That's one subdivision, where's the other one?
The other lot is the two, the one lot is where they want to put the two houses. So they're subdividing that lot.
Into two lots, so you have.
And making it to two. Third lot is the one right off.
Middle pound road.
Middle pound road, that's the bigger lot.
Well, it's been that way for many years.
So Charles, Charles Street is going to feed the two lots on the western side.
That's correct, Charles Street is residential, surrounded by residential.
And with the building, what did you have on the subdivision plan? Those don't require any variances, correct?
I, I, I don't believe they do, but I'm just, I'm just.
Well, it's not talking about site plan. Well, no, but, no, but on a subdivision, normally you see on a subdivision, which they have, you see the building with the.
The house will.
Like, it's R G zoning.
Yeah, these, these houses we show don't require any variances.
Right, the houses will fit in another lot.
The, uh, the clients, twenty-five and ten, which, which, which they seem to do. Will they, will they come back with us with the houses they have to fit, or maybe a variance, one of the two?
Correct.
Right, right, yeah.
Wait, the two houses, is it a subdivision and then like the extension of Charles Street be another subsection of it?
No. So right, right now, right now, it is one long commercial lot and one resi, one long residential lot. We've taken the one long residential lot and split it into two residential lots. That's primarily, commercial's pretty much the same, it's the residential that's been split into two lots.
I guess they do have like the door, there's, there's a point here for the street that you kind of separate.
The, the town is requesting that a T turnaround be put in for snow removal, and the T turnaround is being put onto.
So, so this is one lot, and there's the other lot on here?
And they're like, like, donating that to the town as a road?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
We'll dedicate it to the town. We'll dedicate it to the town.
Gotcha, I understand, okay.
Okay, any other questions?
What, what's gonna happen with the metal building?
On the commercial? The, we're gonna, the, the client would like to come back and extend that building and make a, a, an addition to it, so they can take a lot of the, the things that are on the ground right now and put it into the building.
I mean, all, this is so confusing. You got, you got lot number two, which is on the west side, lot number one, which is in the middle. Where's lot number three? It's all the way on the west hand side, the west hand side. That's gonna be split into two lots. Lot O, so the western lot. No, no. This is how, this is here. I think is the commercial that comes to the, the middle pound road. So this, this is gonna be. That's a lot by itself. That's all by itself. Right? And you okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay, can I have a motion for lead agent?
I have a motion.
Is it second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None. Okay, a, a motion for neg deck? Second? Uh, all favor? Aye, any opposed? Uh, a motion for final on subdivision?
Only.
Only. Okay, do I have a second? No, better read that. Better read, oh, okay, I'm sorry. Rick Oliver dated May first, with two comments. Jane Slaven, November eighth, two thousand twenty-four, has five comments. I have a letter from Aaronoski in respect to, uh, dated, uh, May thirteen, in respect to a home, home harmless. I have a letter from Department of Environmental Engineering, May twelve, Christine, who has twenty-eight comments. I have a letter from Bureau of Fire Convention, April twenty-first, that has one comment. I have a letter from Booker Engineering, May fourteen. Uh, approval. I have a letter from Booker Engineering, May first, disapproval. I have a letter, that's a letter, I have a letter from, um, Booker Engineering, November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, disapproving. I have a letter from Rockland County Department of Planning, May seventh. They have thirteen comments. I have a letter from Rockland County Health, May twelve, four comments. I have a letter from, uh, Alpha Gaddy, May tenth. Oh, no, no, he's what?
No, those, I, I, I. Those were the added things, but they aren't part of the.
Yeah, yes. Okay, uh, do I have a second? Second, okay, all favor, aye, any opposed? None. For the subdivision.
Thank you.
This is subdivision, Mr. Grandor will grant this site plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too, thank you. Okay, next project is the Rojas, like, um, Bradley Parkway, new subdivision amendment, P D twenty-five, there's twenty-eight. Yeah.
Oh, here's an amendment, right?
Yeah, okay.
Good. Richard Clickel, West Nyad. The applicant, Louis Rojas. L U I S.
Uh, could you please sign it? Thank you. Yes, sir, could you please explain your project?
Well, we've got a pre-existing approved site plan and subdivision.
Smoke in the microphone, please.
Sure, uh, which took place back in twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. Uh, the original subdivision of the property, which was property that was owned by Barbara Louie, uh, and she lived on the property and obtained a subdivision in two thousand and five. Lot one was where she resided. Lot two, ultimately, one day, she planned to improve. Uh, time went by. She never did improve that lot, moved to Vermont and sold her house. And lot number two, lot number two was purchased by a gentleman by a member of Castro, and Mr. Rojas contracted with Castro to have his dream house built on lot number two. That contract was entered into in October of two thousand and twenty-one. Construction was to be completed by July, August, Labor Day at the latest of the following year. By April of two thousand and twenty-four, the house was not finished. And a cease and desist letter was sent to Mr. Castro, and Mr. Rojas undertook to complete, acting, acting really as his own G C, the project. When the original subdivision was obtained by Barbara Louie, who was living on the land, um, that plan showed a single entrance, which always existed, to her property, a gravel driveway that went to her garage, and it was envisioned that the driveway leading up to whatever would be built on lot number two would continue up and go to that dwelling. And that was reflected on the subsequent site plan and subdivision that was ultimately granted to Mr. Castro. As the property was being developed, however, um, the next door neighbor, uh, sort of impeded the ability of the Castro equipment and trucks to continue up and to the property. So what they did was they went this way and continued up, and they put gravel down, uh, for traction for the vehicles. And ultimately, when Louise gets around to finishing the job, well, there it is. And he has his paver, blacktopped it, they put in nice pavers, and now you've got a driveway which is at variance with the approved site plan. And if Confucius was right, and a picture is worth many words, we have some copies, uh, of the drawings that we'll show you, and you can distribute them to each of the members, please. And that'll show you where the current driveway is and what was envisioned. Or actually, what was approved. Now, as you go through these, the photographs, the blowups. Picture number one is looking up the driveway from Bradley Parkway. And you can see to the left is the entrance, which is now paved and bricked, uh, at the apron, going up to the Rojas residence. And to the right was the existing apron to eight fifty-six. Next picture is more of the same. It's just a little bit better close up. And you'll see the flags, the little red flags that exist there. And that would have been the root of the driveway that was envisioned on the approved, I guess it was twenty twenty-two, site plan subdivision. Three is now looking out at the road from the driveway, and to the left of the picture, you'll see two healthy tulip trees. And where those trees stand would be in the middle of the driveway as approved. Uh, Mr. Rojas, obviously, elected to save the trees, and for that, Dr. Seuss is forever grateful.
My understanding is that basically the property line or the intention of what the road is, okay?
I, I understand what you're saying, and yes, you're correct, because and that's why the, Barbara created the easement also, because the occupant, next door neighbor, actually has to traverse slightly over the Rojas property. And so there's an easement that Barbara Louie created in anticipation of selling the property in March of two thousand and twenty-one. Um, and at the same time, she, together with the easement, she also did a, a mutual agreement, a mutual maintenance agreement, uh, to the extent that there would be any co-maintenance. Very little, as matters exist right now.
Now, this new driveway.
Yes.
Who's talking to that on?
That's on the Rojas property, entirely on the Rojas property. And that runs right up to his house. Number five.
I think the property line is in this person's driveway.
What's that?
Like, the pro, your property line is here? That how, I think his property line is over here.
No, I understand. This line.
Yes.
What is, is that the property line?
Yes.
Okay, because it's not marked, that's why.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, yeah, that definitely is the property line, and you can see.
So your, the driveway that you put in
Mm-hmm.
is entirely on your property?
Completely.
That's, that's what I was trying to, trying to get to.
That's, here, here it is. As envisioned, or initially, the driveway would go like that to the existing dwelling, okay? And to get there, there's that like little triangle that is actually the easement on Louis's property. As built, the driveway is here. So instead of here, it's there. If it was here, there's two trees right there. Those are the tulip trees that you're seeing in the picture. Instead, the driveway's here. Kind of makes sense.
So from, from the back, the driveway is entirely on your property?
Completely, a hundred percent.
Mr. Ward, perhaps I'll give some context, and Mr. Oliver and I had discussed this matter. I mean, the thing to keep in mind is when the, um, planning board originally approved this, they wanted there to be one exit. So, the planning board approved that the applicant's driveway would go into the neighbor's driveway, so there would be one exit. The applicant, not knowing that, thought it was better to go straight out, so what we have now is two exits. But that's why you see the red flags don't necessarily marry up with the property line, but they were, the intention was to go on, onto the other driveway, so there would be one exit. And that's what the problem is now, is that we have two exits, which is not what the planning board approved, but since it's what he built, he's here to see if he can get a point after this back.
Are you going to, things were, that were put up, should have been put up, and now, do we have them taken down to do, to perform? Does it make sense? This is kind of my thought. I mean, was this done in Malice? No. Was it done because of the situation? Yes. So, I mean, was anybody hurt? Was any, you know?
Well, here from the public, it seems like.
Yeah, well, we're gonna get the public then. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out in our heads, I think the board is exactly what we're looking at.
If you go back to number one, and you take a look at the apron going into the property, if we remove my client's block right here, then essentially what you have is one entrance and one exit.
Then you have a problem with the curb cut.
What was the original thinking about only one in one, because of.
When they gave the original subdivision, uh, they wanted, uh, minimal disturbance, and that was part of two thousand and five. They, they gave the subdivision based on one exit. They were pretty adamant about it. And the trees, the two tulip trees were actually marked, uh, they were supposed to be taken out. Their mark is being removed on the original approach plan.
I have another question for you. Just off the driveway, twenty feet, so we can show the curb cut to the left.
Where are we looking at?
Picture number one.
Okay.
Eight one.
Yeah.
Left hand side, it's like little, you show the curb cut.
I don't think that's intended to be a curb cut. I think that is just the way they laid down the, the cinder block.
They dropped the papers down.
Yeah, yeah, I see, I do.
That's all the curb.
You going anyplace with that? No.
That's, that's basically on the driveway.
And it's entirely on his property.
No, I understand, I'm just saying, what's, what's the reason for it?
I don't think he knows the truth.
I, that's what I was. I got a feeling if you, if you car in the back is headed straight into the house, so there's one, one around there.
Yet, and yet, when you look at it from the fourth photograph, really doesn't look like a curb cut.
Well, okay, go, go to
Yeah.
second picture.
Okay.
That shows the curb cut.
Well, I'm not gonna sit here and argue that point with you.
I understand, I'm just trying to figure out what, what, because if you look at, at the rest of the pictures, it's all straight.
Mm-hmm.
Except that one little area. See on picture four?
Yep, I see what you're talking about.
You just. Driveway dipped down at that point, is it still walk to the, uh, picture number seven, take a look at it. Is the driveway still walk to the, uh?
There, yeah, there is, there definitely is some tilt there, yeah.
Yeah. That's just the order one of all.
Yes.
They can, they really got it up there, plus the roller or something. More concrete there, you only would put the, all those blocks in place. More concrete there, you would only put all those blocks in place. The question is, what do we do?
We open the cover?
Yeah, well, now, I gotta read the comments for that question. I'm just... Okay, Rick Oliver made second, has four comments. Department of Environmental Management, engineer, made twelve, one comment. Fire prevention, dated April twenty-first, has one comment. Rockland County Department of Planning, May first, they have six comments. Rockland County Highway Department, February twenty-fifth, has a letter. Rockland County Health, May twelve, has one comment. Palisades Parkway Commission, May fourteen, has a letter. I have a letter from Louis Rayos to, May sixth, to Captain Bacon. I have a short EAF, dated May sixth, twenty-five. I have a letter from Rockland County Health, dated certificate approval, dated January twenty-seventh, twenty-five. Certificate of Sewer Disposal, so I have a letter. Rockland County Health, May twenty-fourth, twenty-five. I have another letter, Paul DeGance, February third, twenty-five. And that's all. Anything else? Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? I'll wait to tell here from the public. Lisa? No questions?
No.
Bruce?
No.
Okay. Motion open to the public, motion built for the public, second. All favor? All, anybody from the public who can speak on the project? One more time, anybody from the public who can speak on the project? I hear you, none. Motion closed, both, both, both for you.
Second.
Favor, I, all, none, okay. Okay, we have reaffirming one, or...
I would do seeker again. This is a substantial change from what was approved. I would agree to seeker.
Motion for lead agent?
Motion for lead agent.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion for make that?
Motion to make that.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to reaffirm?
What, you like that?
If we're gonna do it?
Be a motion to amend the site plan.
Or approve the amended site plan maybe?
Or, well, okay. I have a motion to approve the amended site plan.
Motion to approve the amended site plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Let me go through the consulting reports again for the pool. Rick Oliver made second, has four. Department of Environmental Management, engineer, made twelve, has one. Fire prevention town, Orange Town, April twenty-first, has one. Rockland County Department of Planning, May first, has six. Rockland County Health, February twenty-fifth, a letter. Rockland County Health, May twelve, one. Palisades Parkway, May fourteen, letter. Rockland County Health, dated January twenty-seven, twenty-five, certificate approval for sewer disposal. Rockland County Health, May twenty-fourth, clients, Paul DeGance, February third, a letter. I'm second?
Second.
In all favor? All opposed? Good luck, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Crazy and crazy.
It is.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Don't do that, please. It's been a long time.
When you were in the land shade, I saw that, and I said, oh, I just hope the board goes along with it. Because it's, it's, it's...
It's pretty good.
... changed. I just want to know what that curb cut went for. Really looks like the driveway. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
The next is the... Again, Hart Town, fellow... Twenty-five, January twenty-nine.
What's your name, sir?
Um, B A L, B E A R.
B A L.
Well, that was something, this is, this is, I'm saying what he's... So introduce yourself to the board. Yes, sir. Did you guys sign in?
Yes, we did.
Ah, you're ahead of it.
Good evening. Bart, roadie engineer for the applicant. Introduce yourself.
Um, Baldemar Nolasco from Our Town.
We signed in, yes.
Explain your project, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna stand up and explain over here. So you have a player? This is an existing car wash. Which is... Pick the mic with you. Sure. Thank you. This is on three oh three. The existing car wash is right here, and is an existing oil change currently. What is proposed is we're putting a little tire area with a couple of bays to change tires. This is a seasonal canopy that's there every spring and summer and fall, and it's taken down for the winter. We propose to put a permanent canopy there, and that's for detailing. And at the entrance to the car wash in the ground, we propose to put a alignment machine. So as you drive over it, it tells if your car's aligned properly. We're going over existing impervious. And the only change in impervious is we're making the island here a little smaller. And to compensate for that, we're putting a grassed area where there's existing blacktop. So we have a negative square footage for zero net runoff. So there's no added impervious and no added runoff for drainage. And this is just the, that's the wheel cleaning blanket, and then sandbags and such for erosion control. We do need a variance for parking. I went over this with acting director Oliver. We could not find where a car wash is exempt from the parking regulation. I meant to call John Giordello, because when they built the oil change, there was no, no need for a zoning variance. Should have been. So either it was missed, or there's a provision we couldn't find. Other municipalities do have car washes as a separate entity, where you don't need to do parking for the two hundred square foot of space. It's usually similar to a warehouse regulation, where it's, you know, one space for every two employees, and there's a formula you use. But we couldn't find that, so we will be going to the ZBA to get a zoning variance. That is the project.
Okay, thank you. Let me go through the consulting report. I'm just going with zoning planning. Rick Oliver made fifth. Just three comments. Department of Environmental Management, engineer, May twelve. Bruce Peters has no comment. Bureau of Fire Prevention, Town of Orange Town, April twenty-first. They have three comments. Department of Planning, Rockland County, May sixth. They have fifteen comments. A letter from Rockland County Sewer District, number one, May fourteen. They have two D, so two, three, four, five, six comments. I have a letter from Alford Gaddy, May ten. Based on the plan provided, proposed work may be in conflict with the existing gas service. Please contact all in our new business department for any disconnect or reconnect. Please note, all gas facilities must be located prior to work. All codes seven fifty-three must be followed. I have a short EAF, dated March eighteen, twenty-five. And, yeah, I can get the narrative. We have a narrative from, oh, three fourteen, twenty-five. Okay, anything else? Thanks. Any questions or comments?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yep.
Based on the comments from... Now, where are we going? Tire centers, we probably got twenty tires stored there?
At most. Yeah, tire centers don't stock tires anymore. It's too many.
Yeah, do you have a storage location, or is...
No, just buy from the distributor.
Okay. Those are the things from the project review. Right, how many parking spaces do you currently have? I looked at the map, and...
Yes, so...
I know the place, it's like the back of my hand.
So we have an exist, we have an existing survey as part of the, which was just done a few, a few months ago. Where there's ten, currently ten parking spaces, uh, twelve parking spaces, actually. It's ten each.
Four up in the corner?
We're adding those, yeah.
Okay, easy to do.
Yes.
Okay. What, is that paved at this point in time, or is that...
It is paved.
Okay.
Yeah, those are exist, those are the existing dumpsters and such.
All right. Faces here?
We're adding those, yes.
Okay, let's move.
That's new.
That's currently paved.
Currently paved, right.
How many spaces you need now?
We are required to have twenty-four. Twenty-four, basically, twenty-three, twenty-five, so twenty-four. We currently have twelve. After the revision, we'll have fifteen.
Any cars, any cars down there?
No, I did the, if, if you remember, I was in front of the board for the Pearl River Car Wash. Correct, and we were putting the new vacuums in. Yeah, they were way under on the parking also.
Guys, I have to say, this, Bruce, hold on a second. Look, my finish.
Oh.
All right, I'll, we'll get to it, I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, Rockland County Plan, number three. We look at the parking vehicles next door, which is five eighteen, Route three oh three, which is the WPT warehouse entrance. They have eleven vehicles today, there were ten over there. And they go vehicles?
No. Nope. We never parked there, never have parked there.
Okay, so nobody knows whose vehicles they are.
Yeah.
They're actual, so...
Not ours.
So get your sign out of there, though. There's an old sign there.
Is, you have a sign on the neighboring property?
It's, it's a broken sign, but it's laying there.
Oh, oh, okay.
Just removed it.
Okay, you got it.
Well, what kind of sign? Is, we choose...
It says a car wash.
Oh, okay.
It's, when you look there, it's, it's behind, you're looking from the drive going adjacent to the car wash, and you're looking to your right, a couple of cars, but there's a, something dumped in there, so it's why they can't say it's, it's yours.
Okay.
Rockland County Plan is gonna keep saying it's yours.
Okay, okay, we'll get rid of that.
Yeah, the other comment I have is, since it is in three oh three overlay, you know, see if you can put more plantings there. However, I know the front end is a fifteen-foot easement right away from the sewer.
Right.
And there's a ten-foot easement on the right way to the sewer. Is that county town, or...
That's, that's the sewer department.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I would talk to Bruce maybe about what could be planted, that they have, that they have no problems with the...
He might, he might have a problem for two reasons. If you remember, when the Subaru had an application in front of you, Bruce was adamant about line of sight and how dangerous it is. And when you put plants in, and you probably all recognize Harry Baker, he's a little traffic engineer we all worked with, I've worked with him many times. The plants can't be more than about thirty inches high, or blocks the view of these smaller cars. So that's why it's grass there. That's why it's all grass.
Or if you wanna put anything in very low, because I, I was out in the street side, you have to, you have to have a low.
Yeah, it'd be like junipers or something, so...
It's something that's, you know, it covers the ground, it shows that you're trying to comply.
Okay.
And even if Bruce puts in their low plants, it does not instruct the...
Right. So we could, we'll, we'll throw a couple of plants in.
Native or something, whatever. Would, would comply with the three oh three.
Okay.
Something here and away. Yeah. Denise, anything?
No.
Is that anything?
No.
You put obstacles in.
I thought they weren't allowed.
You really have to go for a bearing, some stuff.
Are they allowed? I thought they were on the New York list.
Guys, we can't have to make, I mean, Andy, hold on just for a second, Bruce.
Well, they don't, you know, what our code says, they're not required.
No, 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 no car wash in Orange Town. That's a park. I guarantee they ain't go around, so I, I, I'm working coming up with this.
I, I think... I'm thinking there's an exception we just can't find. So we'll go for the variance unless we can find it.
But does it make a lot of sense? Does the tire change that? Having the, the tire...
I think it would kind of fall under the same, because the person, you don't bring two cars. You bring your car, that's inside being worked on, and you wait in the waiting area. So this...
But don't you have cars out there as well?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean...
Yeah, but the one, the one, of course, implies that they won't have something. They probably have six, seven, basically.
I think they have eight, eight total, eight total, yeah.
They, they, they will change.
So we'll get the variance, so...
And that line goes downstream.
So Bruce, can I, can I have you come to the zoning board meeting for us?
Come on, let's finish this up.
But the project is not for board waiting for the car wash, that's...
I think I changed that. But, I mean, okay, seems crazy, guys. Hold my gun, so...
Discomply with the law.
Yeah. Motion open up to public?
Motion open public portion.
Second?
All favor? Aye, aye, aye.
Okay. Anybody from the public who can speak on this project?
Motion closed. Motion centralizes public portion.
Second?
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye, aye, aye. One there.
Okay. A motion from lead agent?
Motion for lead agent.
Second?
All favor? Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Motion for make that?
Motion for make that?
Second?
All favor? Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
A motion for...
Before you do that, can I make a couple of comments?
Yeah, go ahead.
You have to discuss with Rick. So a couple of comments came out when I discussed with him. One was to ask the planning board for a waiver not to go to the architecture view board. Because we're, we're building it exactly the same look at it as it is now. Same materials, same siding, so that the, the bump out we're doing for the tire center is all the same materials that exist there now. Looked, it's gonna look exactly the same. And the canopy exists, as I said, in the spring, fall, summer, four months. We're just gonna have it permanent. So Rick said to maybe ask for a waiver on behalf of the planning board. That's one. Two, I noticed in the package, there weren't any comments from Brooke. So...
I don't think you're doing any drainage work.
Usually gets sent to him, and he confirms that we're not doing drainage work. So hopefully, I don't get something from him. I don't know if it was even sent to him.
But even, even in respect to Bruce Peters?
Yeah. Yeah, you know, Bruce... Yeah, because Bruce was at the PRC meeting, and he saw what was going on. Good, I just wanted to make sure. Because it wouldn't be the first time we didn't, we didn't get the comments.
From, from Booker, but basically, you, you...
Good. I just wanted to make sure, because it would not be the first time in this board and in other boards where Booker did not give a letter timely fashion to the meeting.
Right.
You know, I get it a week after the meeting. It's terrible. It's a terrible policy.
But it wasn't after the time.
Yeah, yeah. And lastly, and also I discussed this with Rick via email. If you give us the preliminary approval, is it possible to continue the meeting? Instead of ending the meeting, where we have to reapply for the meeting?
Can't you vote, one or the other?
What do you mean?
Give you preliminary?
Yeah.
You have to go through whatever has to be done?
Yeah.
And then make another appointment?
Correct, correct. No, no, uh, that's all well and good, so prior to five years ago, I've been in front of this board many times, the meeting would be continued. And unless it was the very next meeting, you had to supply the new plans, you had to supply envelopes?
Doesn't basically have to be the next meeting?
Right, well, say it's five meetings from now, and you would go in, you'd bring your new drawings, your new envelopes, everything you need to do, and you'd give it to the clerk, and it would be sent down?
So this is up to you now, if you feel that whatever is required, you can satisfy within the next, let's say, month, two months. Might be move you to ask for continuation, because you can come back and get the final.
Can't go to the zoning board.
Theoretically.
I asked, can we possibly get final with the condition against this zoning board?
But if, if we get the preliminary, then he has to re...
No.
Do what he has to do when we apply.
Why can't we get the final subject to...
That's, that's another thing.
Six, six weeks.
I know the board's happy with it or not, I mean, in my opinion, it's not a whole heck of a lot.
I, I think it's a minor variance, and I think, like, we all even questioned it, I think it's reasonable, but...
Okay, well, we might have to change the motion, uh, let me pull the board, Andy? Andy, are you, are you comfortable with...
No, I just, I just discovered something that... On the south side of the building?
Yeah.
Where, um, the warehouse is gonna put in...
Yeah. Where?
Yeah, WPT.
This is proposed, right?
Correct, correct.
You got a whole bunch of cars that are parked in.
We just, we, we, we just discussed that.
They're not our cars.
We just had a whole discussion.
Do you have your cars?
No, 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 nope.
But these are cars they're calling and out of your car?
They go right down into three oh four, they don't have to go on the, uh...
Three oh three, maybe?
Three oh three, they don't have to go on the, in the property and be called.
Yeah, they got, they got nothing to do with ours.
There's two clouds there, there's some clouds. And then it's nothing to do with them.
Yeah.
Are you happy with giving a final with conditions? Lisa?
Um, final with conditions?
Mike?
All right.
So they can go to ZBA, or... But that would be one of the conditions, and they have to go to ZBA and get variance, and if they don't get it, they, they're dead. So I'm gonna sit and press it.
I'm okay with final with conditions.
Yeah? Bruce?
I'll, here's final with conditions.
What did I do?
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just looking, because it's, it's four and two, so it's, it's, worse than having, it'd be four and three, or five to two, I have no problem with final with conditions.
Thank you.
Right, um, and then, I mean, if, if you don't, if you're variance, then you have to come back anyway, and change it.
Correct.
So, um, we've done it in the past, and, um, you know, who knows what we'll be doing in the future, I think that's individual application, so, um... Beyond it, I'm gonna have to change my motion, and I have a motion for, uh, final with conditions.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, go have a second.
Can I read conditions?
Oh, okay, good, I'm, thank you very much, I'm getting crazy today. Okay, uh, conditions, uh...
We're gonna, so, you have to decide if you're going with way back one.
Okay.
During this, during this, we can go.
That was one of the conditions, they would do one of the things they want us to do. Uh, for four.
You had to vote, we had to vote.
I would do it for four.
Do it for four.
Okay. Um, can I have a motion to waive the African Bonacor?
Motion to waive that, for the public, that, for...
Okay, second?
Second.
All favor, aye, any opposed, none?
Mike, do you wanna, uh, you wanna have them put like the universe there, or what?
Yeah, they gotta put some, uh...
Okay, yeah, just, probably should put that in the thing.
Right. Some of the deer don't like, otherwise it brings the deer right down the road, and it comes more bad.
Yes.
Okay. So now we're gonna go with, uh, motion for final with condition.
Where do you want?
The, uh, office ability zone, uh, Rick Oliver, May fifth, has three. Department of Environmental Management Engineering, May twelfth, has one. Bureau of Fire Prevention, Town of Orange Town, April twenty first, has three. Rockland County Department of Planning, May sixth, has fifteen. Rockland County Sewer District Number One, May fourteen, has fifteen. And I believe that's it. Okay, okay, with the, the, we have there is, uh, with that, uh, low, uh, landscape has the end of the site plan low, so that the line of sight, the sight distance is not, uh, diminished by the plants, which with all roots, uh, they only recommended, like, that it interferes with, uh, with the county, I mean, regarding building over the, uh... Two regions, resistant plants, so, shrubs.
Right, low shrubs. You also need IUC, right?
Yes.
Okay.
The condition that they have to go for IUC. Anyone else?
Yeah, okay, so we have, uh, the landscape, the IUC. Oh, yeah, I got, I got the...
Second, anybody got anything else? And a second? All favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Opposed.
Two, two opposition.
Any in mind? Good luck with your project, sir.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Okay, you tell, if I have a second?
Sure.
I think we have minutes left, I think.
We have a minute, we have a minute, sir.
Well, we have all the business, we're all coming down here. Looks like this. This is local law. Oh, I, this is, did I say it wrong? The, uh, Town of Orange Town Planning, uh, Town Board requests that they become lead agent for this, uh, referral, called the law. Article eleven, Orange Town Code, Chapter forty-three, Article XV, the kind of landlord registry act, and short-term use property for rental or rental-like purposes. Do I have a motion to allow the Town Board Service Lead Agent?
No.
Motion to, uh, the planning board makes no objection to the Town Board acting as lead agent. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, none? Minutes, okay, minutes. Okay, they put twenty, they put twenty-third. Can anybody have any questions or comments on the minutes for the twenty-third?
The motion approved, motion to approve minutes for the twenty-third, twenty, twenty-five.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
All favor, aye, any opposed, none? Okay, anybody, everybody was here for it? Yeah, I believe, I believe, yeah, this is what, who was here, I think Mike was the only one that was there. I have to say something while it's still being recorded, that someone, she's sitting down on the end of the table, is doing a fantastic job, shorthanded, the whole plan, the whole building, the job, Kayden has to be highly recommended, and I want it on the record, okay? She's doing a great job.
I appreciate it, thank you.
And I have to get a smile out of her.
There's, there you go, you got it.
Okay, do I get a second on that?
Second, that's very important.
Okay, uh, a motion to, uh, close the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
All favor, aye, opposed, none, uh, go home. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.